Do you have to go pictures? I want to start making them at home.
Oh, we were just serious. Hi, we got chores.
Yeah, he stood up. Yeah. I believe that.
Just one presentation is one.
Just one. I don't think that's the one.
No jeans slash.
No politics.
No politics. I just think I would be.
I'm probably with silver.
Wrong. I just think I'm. Traffic. I feel for you.
But that that table is bad.
Oh shit.
I'm gonna have to go.
Even doing it to.
I might have to. I might have to find someone as hard as when I can.
You're lucky the way you're standing. I put it for a calorie.
Yeah.
We're very. Very. Doesn't mean.
Right. That might be the reason.
What a position. But. He knows.
Justin Flores.
There you go.
Sound a little bit hopeful.
I don't. Trying to take care of. Yeah, it's also. It's also frustrating. And people. Don't listen. Always bring along. Yeah, we know. It's either. If we don't. If you're. There's an. Even though. That's right after. TS. We had the R three before TS. So I don't have. But that's why.
Good to know. Yeah.
You ready?
Yeah.
I would like to call the meeting of the planning commission to order at six oh three P M. Planning commission secretary, may we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Flores?
Present.
Commissioner Cervantes?
Present.
Commissioner Ayala?
Present.
Vice Chair Jimenez?
Present.
Chair Sarno?
Present.
All present.
Uh, I would like to call upon Chair Isabel Cervantes to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please. Please rise.
Place your hand over your heart. Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, ex parte communications. This section is intended to allow all officials the opportunity to reveal any disclosures regarding site visits, ex parte communications about public hearings. Are there any ex parte communications?
None.
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 And I have none. Next, public comments on non-agenda, non-public hearing agenda. At this time, the general public may address the planning commission on both non-agenda and non-public hearing agenda items. Comments relating to the public hearing item will be heard during the public hearing. Please be aware of the maximum time allowed for members of the public to speak shall not exceed three minutes. State law prohibits the planning commission from taking action or entering extended discussion on topics not listed on the agenda. Please show the courtesy to others and direct all your comments to the chairperson. Planning commission secretary, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak?
We have none.
Okay. So I will now close public comment and move on to the next item. Next item, consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine. Any consent item a planning commissioner wishes to discuss should be designated at this time. All other items may be approved in a single motion. For consent items numbers one, two, and three, is there a motion and a second for the approval of these consent items?
All motion.
All second.
We have a first and a second. Planning commission secretary, roll call, please.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Cervantes?
Aye.
Commissioner Ayala?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jimenez?
Aye.
Chair Sarno?
Aye.
Passes.
So ordered. There is a fourteen day appeal period for any wishes appeal appealing these matters. Uh, next, we will now design. We will now begin with item number four, the agenda at this time. I will open the public hearing at six oh five P M. I now will call upon Associate Planner Jimmy Wong to introduce this item.
Do you have any commissioner? Is it? It's on, right? Okay, cool. So item number four, conditional use permit, case number eight five three, to allow a trucking facility for tractor, trailer, and tanker at one one seven oh eight Pike Street and a determination for category exemption under section one five three oh one, class one of the SEQA guideline for existing facility. Okay, cool. All right. Uh, location is at one one seven eight, uh, one one seven zero eight Pike Street. The land use destination is industrial. The size of the property is approximately one point five nine acre. The zoning is M two heavy manufacturing, and the applicant is L G T Transport LLC, also referred as L G T. Uh, for zoning requirement, um, a conditional use permit is required per section one five five point six five six for trucking transit or transportation facility, including vehicle repair and storage within the M two heavy manufacturing zone. So in addition to, uh, a conditional use permit, um, there's also two provision. A conditional use permit shall not be issued for a site that front a freeway, major or secondary highway. Pike Street is considered a local street according to the city general plan, and then the second, uh, criteria is that the site cannot exceed two acre, and the project site is approximately one point five nine acre. So, uh, little his, uh, background on entitlement in March, um, two thousand twenty one, Brant Tech Pacific Inn has used the project site as a temporary, uh, trucking facility under C U P case number eight one five. The operation had ended in late two thousand twenty four, and in two thousand twenty five, uh, the applicant has operate the site as a trucking facility under the new, uh, temporary truck or container storage permit, case number, uh, two dash twenty twenty four. So that permit will allow the operation for a period of two year, and it give the applicant time to apply for a conditional use permit to establish a permanent trucking facility. Um, so a little background on L G T. Um, L G T is based in Omaha, Nebraska, and is specialized in transportation of industrial gas. Um, they have a operation, uh, since two thousand eighteen in Azusa and West Sacramento. Um, recently, um, the company planned to expand, uh, its Southern California operation by adding additional truck to better serve the regional demand. Um, so the project site was selected because it would offer the necessary infrastructure to support the growth of the operation. Additionally, is located near a key client, um, air product. The site will provide logistic efficiency that align with the operating goal. Um, here's the proposed site plan. Um, as you can see, um, is just going to be trucking parking only. Um, there's a new update on the bottom left corner. Those, um, uh, building, uh, temporary office has been removed according to the applicant, so they're no longer there. All they have is a, uh, bathroom, I believe, a party and, um, just truck and the location. So for operating hour, um, the applicant is proposing to operate twenty-four hour a day, seven day a week, um, in case of emergency of, uh, gas, um, industrial gas needed by his decline. And for staffing, the site will staff one onsite manager and fifteen truck driver. Um, the site is capable to accommodate, uh, a maximum of nineteen truck and trailer unit, and on average, approximately five unit will be present at any given time. And lastly, there will be twelve packing, parking stall for employee personal vehicle.
I have a question. Well, want to wait till after?
Um, yeah.
We'll wait up. We'll talk. Okay. I just want to remember this page. Okay.
Um, so here's the photo of the site. Um, it was taken today. Uh, as you can see, there's wall and landscaping, screening, um, the truck and the tanker that's parked onsite. Um, so it provided a buffer between, uh, the use and, uh, the site, uh, the street on site. For environmental, uh, for SEQA review, uh, the project is, uh, considered exempt from SEQA pursuant to section one five three oh one, class one, existing facility. The project's only involve a new operator for existing trucking facility with no additional building square footage being proposed. Uh, for public hearing notice, um, staff have mailed out to all property owner within five hundred feet, also posted in, uh, Santa Fe Springs City Hall, City Library, and Town Center Hall kiosk on April fourth, two thousand twenty five, and was also published in, uh, Surito Community Newspaper on April fourth, two thousand twenty five. Today, staff have not received any comment regarding the project. Uh, for, for record, oh. So for key consideration, um, the proposed use align with the objective of the M two zone, and is consistent with the surrounding industrial use. The applicant plan to take over existing temporary trucking facility, apply a new, uh, conditional use permit, and allow for a permanent trucking operation. Um, the second consideration does is for screening. As required by the zoning code, uh, all vehicle will be screened behind a six-foot-high block wall. In addition, the site incorporated enhanced front landscaping to provide the safe visual appearance. For recommendation, uh, staff recommend that that the project is exempt from SEQA, uh, pursuant to section one five three oh one, class one, existing facility, and also recommend approve the conditional use permit number eight five three, subject to the condition approval as stated within resolution two eight four dash twenty twenty five, exhibit A, and also adopt resolution, uh, two eight four dash twenty twenty five, which incorporate the planning commission finding and action regarding this matter. And that conclude my presentation.
Thank you, Jimmy. Uh, we will now move to commissioners' questions and comments. Does any member of the commission have any questions or comments for the staff?
I just have a question. If you could refresh my memory, how long was, uh, the temporary, uh, trucking for?
Yeah, so there was a, I believe there was given, uh, two year.
Years?
For the temporary, uh, the permit or for Brant Tech?
Yes, two years. Two years. Okay. Okay.
I have another question. You say that it's going to have staffing of one person onsite?
Yeah.
Where is he going to be housed if there's no office space for him?
I'll have the, I'll have the applicant to answer.
Doesn't make sense to have someone onsite if there's no appropriate office space for them?
I think there's a plan to provide a, um, part office in the future. However, um, we're still in talk of the design of the office. So when that come, uh, we will, we'll go through the administrative process for a new construction of a small office.
Cause it says no onsite. Nope, the building's.
Yeah.
Going to be removed.
Yeah, according, cause, um, the truck and trailer is actually does not have a permit currently, so they would have to remove it and construct a new one. And at this point, at this time, they have not submit any proposal on the, on any type of office, but in the future, when they submit, they will need to go through building, planning, and fire to make sure it meet the city code.
And that will be as soon as?
As soon as possible. It's in the condition.
The summer's coming up. It'd be hard. I mean, I have a hard time seeing someone out there in their car sweating during the day.
Yeah, uh, we added a condition that, uh, staff and applicant will work together within, uh, um, within one year to make sure that there's something there onsite.
So I, I did have a question, but I think I figured it out. The nineteen parking stalls on the map for the truck and trailers obviously would be on the backside of the, the wall, correct?
Uh, correct. Yeah.
And then the middle parking would be for?
Or tractor that are, um, not as big.
Okay, so it says nineteen tractor trailer units. There's only, there's only thirteen or twelve spaces.
Yeah, so nineteen is up two. So in currently, they are proposing only eighteen, fifteen on them onsite. So any additional proposal, they would need to stripe and provide that updated site plan to the city staff.
Okay, well, the one thing I, I do want, because what type of gases are they, uh, hauling? Or what, what are they? Do they ever have anything in those track, in those trailers?
Uh, it would be empty.
They're always empty?
It was kind, I, I believe, uh, it was a, there's a condition that it will be empty onsite. Yeah.
Okay, so we would, just because if there's ever is a fire, uh, we want to make sure that our firemen are safe and they have enough space to, uh, put their rigs, because I know we've had in the past, we've had fires and, uh, yards are over, over, uh, stocked, and they weren't able to, you know, get to the fire and, you know, cause more damage, so.
I can have the applicant to clear, uh, provide more clear explanation, but, um, for storage of gas, um, there, there is a separate conditional use permit. It is over certain amount. So this conditional use permit is only for trucking facility. So if they are proposing to store gas onsite, they will need to get additional.
Well, we wouldn't know that if they were, they weren't. So I mean, that's, uh, if they, something happens and they got emergency parked there, then that would be, it wouldn't be a continuous business, but I'm just saying for the future, I just want to make sure that our firemen and we're making sure that the, the stalls are, are appropriated, appropriated, because it says nineteen, but on the, on the parking, there's only thirteen. So where, where are you going to add the other six stalls to?
Yeah, I'll have to. I can have the applicant.
Okay, no problem.
Chair Sarno, just for the record, um, anytime we're reviewing C U Ps for either trucking or trailer storage or containers, um, we confirm that it's empty. Otherwise, um, if there's products, we actually get confirmation of what it is that they plan to store so that it can be conditioned properly. Uh, usually, fire is the one that would, uh, place requirements depending on what type of, um, products are stored, whether they're fable hazard, uh, hazard materials or so forth.
Appreciate it. Anyone else have any questions?
As far as the one year of having a facility for onsite staff, who verifies that? And if that facility isn't erected within a year, do they, does a permit get canceled?
Yeah, cause, uh, this is a conditional use permit, so, uh, we do do compliance review, um, every year, uh, the first year. So within that year, I'll work with the applicant. If there's any, uh, violation to the condition, we can already bring it back to a condition, uh, to the planning commission and revoke the C U P, but obviously, the first thing we would do is work with the applicant to make sure that all the condition are met and, uh, with all the city code as well.
Yeah, it's standard practice for new C U Ps. We usually have a, a condition that requires compliance review after the first year. So we'll definitely catch it when we do the compliance review at that point.
Sounds good.
One more.
Good.
I would like to have the applicant explain, um, Chair Sarno's question.
Yeah.
Of where the, the different, if there's only thirteen spaces.
Okay, so if we're done asking questions to the staff, we'll move on to the applicant.
So does any member of the commission have any questions or comments for the applicant? Now?
You could come and explain, please.
Hey, uh, good evening, honorable commissioners. Um, Justin Meremis on behalf of L G T Transport LLC. Um, happy to answer your questions. I want to just at the outset, thank Jimmy. It's been a lot of work on this project, so very, uh, happy with his thorough, um, review of everything. I, I won't go back through sort of everything. I'll just stick to, to the questions that were asked. Um, while we're talking about parking, it's already up there. So if you're looking at sort of the overall count, this has to be looking at, look, taken in context of how many trucks are ever at the site at any given time, right? So if for whatever reason, there's a maximum of nineteen truck, tr- tractor trailers onsite, there's not personal employees vehicles onsite because they're gone. So they would utilize that middle column, I think Chair Sarno, that's what you were sort of alluding to, of the, of the, uh, that, that middle, I think fourteen or twelve.
Yeah, the twelve.
To, to park the tractor trailers if for whatever reason there were nineteen onsite. On average, there's five.
So what's the length of a tractor trailer? Fifty-three? Fifty-three feet?
Mario, who's the onsite manager, may have that answer, but for the tractors, I have forty-five to forty-eight, and then trailers are thirty to forty-five.
So is that enough room? Because you, I know you have the two gates there to not overlap one gate or the other. Is that enough room in between it?
Yeah, my understanding is.
I don't know what that is.
My understanding is it would be, but we would also work with staff to make sure they have the full dimensions.
That's all we want to know.
Um, and then on the question about the gases, so the types of gases are, are utilized for, um, SpaceX primarily, and they're oxygen, nitrogen, hydrogen. They in and of themselves are not hazardous materials, but they're pressurized, right, when they're in the tankers. So that's sort of where the hazard come from, comes from. They're never filled onsite. We've worked with staff on this. They have never been previously, and they will never be in the future. Um. Remind me if there are any other questions.
I do have a question. So I'm just trying to do the math. So you're saying that if there were to be nineteen tractor trailer units there, there wouldn't be any other cars there because, because of why again?
Because they're, they're flipping in and out, right? So someone would bring their personal vehicle there, pick up a tractor trailer.
So then why does it say staffing? The site will be staffed by one onsite manager and fifteen truck drivers?
I believe we're, we're, the fleet capacity is nineteen, but I believe onsite at any given time is a maximum would be fifteen, not nineteen. So that may be where the discrepancy is coming from. I do have the onsite manager here as well who might be able to answer.
So do those drivers?
That's what I'm saying.
Park their daily cars there and then go take the truck and to that? Or are there?
That's correct.
Personal cars parked there while they take out the trucks?
That's correct.
Okay. So these are for, these are for, uh, the employees that drive these trucks? And so when they, when they take these trucks out or they come back, those cars are there, so they take them off? Correct? Am I, am I saying that correct?
Yep. And, and then I did forget to mention the onsite manager question. So Mario Alvarez is here. He is the onsite manager. He is there normally from eight to five every day, um, to, to the point that was made. Currently, he's moving between Azusa and, um, Santa Fe Springs in order to service the site and then go back to his actual physical office. There was a temporary office that was onsite, um, that has since been removed. We will work on whatever that future design will be for the onsite.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. This is still not adding up. So we have nineteen trailer trucks, fifteen truck drivers onsite, but twelve parking stalls for employees and personal vehicles. It, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense. So these numbers should, like, so nineteen tractor trailers, but fifteen truck drivers onsite, but only twelve parking stalls.
Commissioner Ayala, if you, um, you would like, what we could do is basically, um, take your recommendation or, uh, for the project and have it subject to staff's thorough review and updated site plan, because I agree with you. Um, there's some confusion in terms of the numbers.
Sounds good. Thank you.
And then is there going to be a, are you guys going to bring back an office for like an office trailer for, for the onsite manager?
So.
Cause what does he do now? Just sit in the car?
No, he does work on vehicles while he's there. So he's there managing the site and working on vehicles. Yeah, the, the, the summer is well taken. We're getting there.
Yeah, it's gonna be hot out there in the summertime. You need somewhere to sit.
And there are the, you know, we, we, the one structure that is still there, the permanent structure is the restroom structure. Um, but, uh, yeah, we'll, we'll work with staff on what that structure would look like.
And that office, the mobile office does not need to be a permit or part of the C U P, right? Because it's mobile. You can come and take it as you please. So I would strongly recommend if you're going to have somebody there twenty-four hours, you at least have.
And it's a condition of approval, so we'll, yeah.
Yeah. Um, do you guys want to table it, or do you want to just, uh, it's up to you guys. What do you guys feel?
I have a question. At any given time, you do actually have fifteen truck drivers there?
No, so fifteen is a absolute maximum. Something crazy has happened on a singular day that you would have fifteen. On average, there are five.
Okay. Um, did you hear that? They only average on five, so fifteen's a max.
Yeah.
This doesn't say max fifteen, though. It says and fifteen truck drivers.
Yeah, I think that was a confusion.
There's a lot of, it's very vague, and, and, and when you, when there's gaps, right, we're, we're, we're leaving ourselves exposed to, you know, what could be versus what it actually should be. We can't hold someone accountable to certain standards when there's so much vagueness to this.
So I, I'm also being told by our onsite manager that the fifteen was, I think, a conservative number we, uh, included in the application. There's actually a maximum of probably closer to what the average is, five or six at any given time.
So but the stall, how many stall, how many stalls do, count the stalls. How many stalls do we have?
I, I have a suggestion. Based on the site plan we have, that, what the applicant is, is confirming is their operation. Whatever we allowed up to twelve, which would like basically be under the employee stalls as well as the tractor stalls that are shown on the site plan.
I would be okay with approving it based on the amount of stalls that you have there, not on the numbers you have there, because I think it's, it's a discrepancy.
That's acceptable.
Cause I think just for everybody's, I mean, we know what they have there, so why don't we just approve it based on the stalls? What you have there, and then if later on you feel that you want to add stalls, or if there's a way to do it, then come back and.
And as mentioned, we have the, the one-year review as well. So if there's any issue, we would modify the condition.
So we don't, we don't waste more time, and, and let's just approve it based on the, the layout that we have there. That would be the amount of trucks allowed for, uh, for parking.
That makes sense.
Okay? Are you guys okay with that? Okay.
Mr. Chair, there is a public comment section through the public hearing item to open and close public comment.
I didn't close public comment?
We were on the, uh, section, uh, the questions for the applicant?
Yes.
So that's the next section.
Okay, so I'm gonna open up public comment first, right?
Correct.
So I will now open up public comment for this item. Planning commission secretary, do we receive any speaking cards or written comments for this item?
None.
All right, I will now close. Oh, wait, gotta, please state your name and the city residence and the record to address the planning commission. Also, please note, there is a three-minute, uh, limit for each speaker. Uh, if there is no objection by all members of the commission, I will close public comments and public hearing items number four. No problem? All right. If there are no further commissioners, questions, or comments, I will close public hearing at, uh, six, six twenty-four, six twenty-six?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight? Thank you, sir. Um, may I have a motion and approval for requested C U P case number eight five three and adopt resolution number two eight four dash two zero two five, which incorporates the planning commission findings and actions regarding this matter. May I have it first?
I'll move on the amount of, uh, twenty-five parking spaces. Is that what we're going off of?
I have nineteen.
All right, then nineteen.
No, no, the, the.
Whatever's there.
The spaces that you, that, the spaces that you gave us, so you had, uh, thirteen of the truck parking, and then you had the, the side employee parking, and then you had the double stacks. So whatever those, whatever that layout are, that's the maximum amount of parking. Nineteen.
Not tractor trailer.
No, it is tractor trailer, because the double, the, the two that, the two doubles that they have back to back in the middle? If, if there's no parking there, then they would be able to park there, as long as it doesn't egress into the opening of either side of the, or exit of the, of the, what's called?
Per, per plan attached.
Yeah, just go per plan.
All right, per plan.
Is that okay? Okay, so first.
I'll move per plan.
Per plan? Not by the, but, not.
For the picture.
For the, for the site plan, not by the numbers that you've given to the nineteen, the fifteen, and the twelve, whatever they were. Okay? Okay, so first, I have a second?
I'll second.
A second. Planning Commission Secretary, can we please conduct a roll call vote?
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Cervantes?
Aye.
Commissioner Ariela?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jimenez?
Aye.
Chair Sarno?
Aye.
Costas five zero.
So ordered. There's a fourteen-day appeal period for anyone wishing to appeal this matter. Thank you, guys. New business, I now call upon Associate Planning Claudia Jimenez to introduce this item.
Good evening, planning commissioners and members of the audience. Today, I present to you modification permit case number thirteen sixty-five. The location of the project is at one five one two five Morquard Avenue. The owner applicant is Nankrak LLC and TriStar Dying and Finishing, Inc. The zoning is M2 heavy manufacturing, and the general plan is industrial. The facility overview, the facility, the project site consists of two parcels, APNs eight zero six nine dash zero one five dash two. It covers approximately three point one four two acres in the M2 heavy manufacturing zone, and the surrounding zonings are all adjacent properties are zoned for heavy manufacturing. The subject property is sixty-six, or the subject building is sixty-six thousand one hundred and four square feet. It's been operating since two thousand and six. It specializes in dying and finishing textile fabrics, receives overseas fabric shipments via containers from Port of Long Beach, and containers remain on-site six to twenty-four hours, and occasional use of parking areas for container staging and storage due to space constraints. A little background of the facility, and also on the applicant. On September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, TriStar Dying Finishing submitted a request, MOD case number thirteen sixty-five, to temporarily omit forty-six of the hundred and two required parking spaces for outdoor storage use. According to the city zoning code, the subject property is required to provide a total of a hundred and two parking stalls, based on the existing building size of sixty-six thousand one hundred and four square feet. The parking analysis before you is the alternative plan. What the site required parking stalls are today is a hundred and two, based on the zoning code calculations. The, it's calculated based on the first twenty thousand square feet is divided by five hundred, which equates to forty stalls, and the remaining is divided by seven fifty, which equates to a total of sixty-two parking stalls. So if you can see here, you do see, the yellow area shows the, the parking, the required parking. The blue areas are for storage, and in the front is also ADA stalls. And then one thing that I did wanted to point out was the pink line between two parcels, and that, a little history of that property, it includes a railroad spur access agreement, which was found through our research. It was granted by the railroad company, which was, gave establishment to access to the APN on the rear lot, and that was established and back in nineteen sixty-nine, and it permitted vehicle access to the rear lot. The proposed parking analysis shows as follows. So the proposed outdoor storage area will be screened from public view. It's situated approximately two hundred and twenty-four feet from the front yard property line, and will be enclosed by two ten-foot perforated steel gate and fences. The proposed fire circulation area highlighted in purple, which will come up in a few minutes, and storage zones highlighted in pink, were reviewed and approved by the fire department, for your records. Staffing and hours and operation. So during shift change at seven AM to, to seven PM, the facility reaches a peak, bear with me. Bear with me. It's going backwards. There it goes. Okay. My apologies. So during shift changes at seven AM to seven PM, the facility reaches a peak of forty-two employees due to brief overlap. And to accommodate this, the project site includes fourteen additional parking stalls beyond the peak staffing level, ensuring a smooth operation without disruption. So after accommodating employee parking needs, at least twenty-five percent of the proposed fifty-six parking stalls will remain available for visitors or to address periods of increased parking demand. So the applicant did provide a roster of the employees, a detailed roster indicating their hours of operation, and also their, their shifts, which is before you. So TriStar and Dying and Finishing has coordinated with customers to limit deliveries, three containers per day, reducing an onsite container circulation and accumulation to maintain a clearer fire access, while also providing onsite parking for staff and, and prevent offsite impacts, and including fourteen additional stalls to accommodate shift change overlap. The applicant did provide us a detailed letter indicating that they had reduced their limited deliveries per day, and they also provided us a staffing information of their hours of operation, also the staff's shifts as well. So they made some adjustments. So the modification request before you today is to reserve and not provide forty-six of a hundred and two required parking stalls, and reduce the parking stalls to fifty-six, use set areas for outdoor storage, and there is an alternative plan that was provided to you that shows the forty-six additional stalls that can accommodate if necessary. And as part of the proposal, the applicant will re-striping grade the parking area to improve circulation and ensure full compliance with ADA requirements. So in regards to SEQA, staff, after analyzing, has determined that the project qualifies for categorically exemption under SEQA pursuant to section one five three oh one, class one, as it involves existing use and does not result in additional building square footage. On April second, April second, April second, two thousand twenty-five, April fourth, correction, staff mailed five meeting notices to adjacent property owners regarding the modification request and upcoming planning commission hearing, and there's now no response or comments have been received from those notified. The recommendations tonight, staff recommends the planning commission finds the project categorically exempt from SEQA under section code one five three zero one, approved modification permit case number one three six five, and adopt resolution number two eight five dash twenty twenty-five, subject to the conditions attached as resolution. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. Does any member of the commission have any questions or comments for staff?
I have a question. That railroad?
Yes.
That's there? Is it considered dead? They don't use it anymore?
It's inoperable. The, the tenants have been trying to see if they can have it removed so they can consolidate both parcels, but with no, no prevail with the railroad company, so they're leaving it as is.
So no, no train can actually get into?
No, it's only a spur, a long spur, there's no, there's no beginning or end to it.
Oh, okay.
Anyone else? Does any commissioner have any questions for the applicant? No? Okay. Do the commissioners have any other comments regarding this matter? No? Is there a motion to approve the mod case number one three six five and adopt resolution two eight five dash two zero two five, which incorporates the planning commission findings and actions regarding this matter? Can I get, do we have a motion?
A motion.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Planning Commission Secretary, can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Cervantes?
Aye.
Commissioner Ariela?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jimenez?
Aye.
Chair Sarno?
Aye.
Costas five zero.
So ordered. All right, next. Staff communication on items of community interest. Does staff have any announcements? Oh.
You would like to just say something?
Oh, good. Yes, sir.
Hello, honorable members of the committee. On behalf of TriStar Dying and Finishing, I would personally like to thank you for granting this motion. It'll help us in, you know, the logistics and moving the fabric and the material that comes to the ports and then goes out to the customers, so it'll be a big help. We thank you very much.
Well, we can, hopefully, continue success with your business, and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Staff communication on items of the community interest. Does any staff have any communication?
Yes, I just wanted to remind you all of the mayor's prayer breakfast this Thursday that you are all invited to. Also, this weekend is Parks and Rec's Easter Extravaganza, which you are also all invited to. And then next week, Saturday, there's Art Fest, you guys are also all invited to Art Fest. And the week after that, we have the superhero five K, which you are also all invited to. Hope to see you there.
I think there's also a, a drive to make sure that if you are attending, to please confirm with Priscilla, city manager's secretary.
Thank you. Chair, commissioners, council conference reporting, does any commissioners have any, something to report on? No? All right, this meeting is adjourned at six forty PM. The next meeting, planning commission, is set for May twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, six PM. Thank you, guys, and have a great night.
Thank you. Thank you.